This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
Randy, can you still hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
The crow prize, he doesn't look very far.
And now I can see you too.
This conference will now be recorded.
I don't know if you can hear me or not, but I can't hear anything. Randy, can you hear us okay?
I can now, yes.
I'm sure he's waiting for a call.
We can't hear you.
We couldn't hear you, we couldn't hear you, Brandon.
Can you hear me now?
Still can't hear you.
There's, there's nothing.
No, we see ya.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and of equal rights and justice.
Thank you and welcome everyone. Item of our agenda is to approve the agendas, are any changes Bruce?
Please the chairman, yesterday, be prepared an amended agenda, you will know it by looking at general business eight o'clock. The last item there, it's underlying, and that is to note the receipt of petitions for six initiated ordinances, we can talk about that more when we get there. But otherwise, that will be the only change. I did also add discussion potentially about the nurse pay scale under sheriff's time, but he will be able to join us today, so that discussion will be put out for another day.
Okay. Eighty twenty five percent. What would you think? That there. Landowner first stand.
Oh. Otherwise, no. How should we do this?
A second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Do we have any conflicts today? Seeing none. We need approval for the minutes from February thirteenth meeting.
Move to approve as presented.
So yeah. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the minutes, last meeting, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, Brandon, are you still having trouble hearing?
I can hear you fine. Can you hear me at all?
I can't hear you.
It's on your hand.
Yeah, you'll have to use your thumbs, Brandon, because we can't hear you.
Can we hear Jack? We should see her. Is there a Jackie there, is okay?
Good morning, yes, I can, thank you very much.
Okay.
Can't hear her either. Is microphone like reading?
Next item is bills. I've had my questions answered.
As did I.
Everybody just move to approve bills. Okay. We have a motion in a second for approval of your bills, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Travel requests.
How was that? Everybody's hit better?
I can hear you Bruce, can you hear me?
Yeah. Okay, I have one travel request. For Pat Johnson to travel to Fort Lauderdale, Florida for the AGA jail conference from May seventeenth through the twenty third. And he has signed a travel agreement.
I would comment that they ought to get some. They have, I know, or before they. There, see if they can get on Zoom or something. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have to.
There is. Okay, personnel.
Okay, um, we have, the chairman presented several, all of them said classification change, but they forgot to change the bubble. So I can tell you which ones are step raises and which ones are classification changes, and if you want to pick them all up one time, that could work, or however you want to do that.
You want to sort them out.
So step raise for Brent McNeil, Mackenzie Jarrell, JD Marshall, Miranda Dove, Heather Clark, Brenda Sitting Bear, and Robert Witherston. Those are the step raises.
Motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion from Brandon.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Tisdale. Any further discussion, Mr. Jennings? Brenda Sitting Bear was a step raise.
Um, yeah, yes, she, yes, yes, she is.
And was she in, I know important.
She was, but she has higher experience, so she, I mean.
Why didn't she just get hired at a higher class?
If they wanted to put her training or something perhaps.
But I had her at, I want to say, correctional two grade one, there's quite a few, I can't quite remember, but I think that where she was, and then moved her up to.
So she's still listed as a Kyle residence.
Yes, yes, yes.
Commissioner Sleep.
Uh, I was concerned about Brent McNeil, he's a class, or step two of twenty nine ninety-eight, and then we go over to Anthony Panzon, and he's a step one, he's over thirty-one dollars.
Yes, Commissioner Sleep, but he's classified as a deputy two. Deputy, yeah, deputy two, where Brent is a deputy one.
Yeah, there's not much effort to pay a thirteen to do. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything further, any further discussion?
Yeah, one other thing, are most of these people within the Sturgis Federation that are coming there?
It has notes on there where they live. If they, if they don't live in the county, it has where they live. Brent lives in Newell, Hugh County.
Oh.
JD Marshall. Yeah, so they all are noted where they live.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
One other comment, Mr. Chairman, could we ask that the department heads have to print their name also, because I have no idea who these people are.
Print names.
Anything further? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion before us will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and then I just the two classification changes for Anthony Panza and Zachary Washington.
I'll move to approve. I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have, thank you very much.
Additional budget transfer, Brenda, nine thousand four hundred forty-three dollars.
Yes, um, so we had needing some repairs on a couple of sheriff's vehicles, and this is just the money from the insurance company to put back in the budget to take some repairs.
Oververbal. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Okay, we've got an amended order approving Cherry Valley Road District Minor Adjustment of Boundaries.
Yes, um, if you remember at the last meeting, we approved this minor adjustment. What happened is when we took it up to the deeds office, we realized that we had block three listed in illegal description, and that needs to be removed in order to index it properly. So we're just asking for a motion to approve the amended.
So moved.
Thank you very much.
A second for approval, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I don't think it affected them.
No, no, but just that block three was listed, and I apologize.
And we have.
Raffles, which the chairman, for consideration is a raffle presented by the Sasquatch Booster Club, I think it speaks for itself, this is the new one. Be looking for a motion from the commission not to object.
Move away, don't object. Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to not object. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, Bruce, for down, uh, receiving position.
One second, Mr. Chairman. So yesterday, and I will refer to Brenda at any time, but some folks brought in six ordinances, trying to initiate, initiate the ordinances. And we would note receipt of those petitions, but that they are not. They're not filed pursuant to seven eighteen, eighteen, I believe is the statute. So Brenda and her staff are still reviewing them for sufficiency and format and number of signatures and so forth. And so we would expect that at your next meeting, March, on March twelfth, that we will have a follow-up with some measure on that issue, does that make sense? Okay. But they, they did present them, and so they have been received.
Just not officially filed, just received.
That's right.
Okay. And these are ordinance, are new ordinances, or they're admitting that current orders?
There, there's six brand new ordinances that would relate generally to how elections are conducted in the county. And so they cover everything from voting centers to tabulating machines, to book, to express, express votes, a number of issues. And I can add too, that part of our analysis is necessarily going to be a legal analysis as well. There's concern that in two thousand twenty-one, there was a South Dakota Supreme Court case involving marijuana. And the Supreme Court overthrew those initiated measures regarding marijuana, and the issue there was the single subject rule. And so what happened there is, I think there was about eight different, as I recall, marijuana-related measures that were commingled into one. Here we have six issues that are, that are presented as one question to the voters, right? So there's analysis that needs to be done about whether or not that the single subject rule has been violated. And so the single subject rule is codified in the Constitution on Article Three, there's also a specific state law that talks about the single subject rule. And so this is not something that, you know, that we can just not look at and have to evaluate, right? We have this very recent South Dakota Supreme Court case to look at to guide us, so that will also be part of our analysis, you know? It's interesting, just as, just I note that, that we all take oaths in one form or another. And so for example, you wrote as a county commissioner, is to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota. So that includes all the laws as well, right? And so we, we cannot set that duty aside, and there's also going to be a question about whether or not one or more of these proposed ordinances violates federal law, the Help America Vote Act, right? And so otherwise, if, if this would go into place, and if it does violate the Help America Vote Act, it puts Brenda as the auditor in a, in an untenable position of violating state law and federal law. Or you follow this ordinance, does that make sense? There's some very significant issues that we need to work out, and there's also an issue potentially called preemption. And preemption is, is, we, I know mostly as to occupy the field doctrine. So when the state of South Dakota occupies a field, basically the county, either directly or through its residents, can't then pass laws in, in, in that, in that area. Does that make sense? So like property taxes, the county can't pass an ordinance that says we're going to collect property taxes differently than how state law prescribes. And so I use that as the example of, of, we're now being proposed, these ordinances are proposed to conduct an election potentially different than what state and federal law allow. So we have to do that analysis, and so we've been diligently working on that, we have more to come.
Okay, we'll address it again on our meeting, March twelfth. All right. No one, obviously, will be here for Sheriff D, he's home ill, he'll be ill quickly. Is there anything that you can add to it, Bruce, or do we go on to the next item?
Next item.
Well, the next item is a public hearing, and that's scheduled for eight twenty-five. So. John, you want to come forward here, and we'll beat on you for ten minutes, and then we'll do our public hearing.
I think I can really withstand five minutes of beating.
Oh. Yeah, okay.
Did you hear me?
What's that?
I am getting old. As we all are.
Well, I don't have a real lot, but I do have kind of a, my, I have one approach permit here. Ike's Holdings LLC has submitted an application, they're wanting to change an approach that was already approved back in twenty-two, I think, or twenty-one. Yeah, they issued a private approach up Christianson Drive Road, he's wanting to move it a couple hundred feet to the north and turn it into a commercial approach. So I did a little, I, I did, in my report to you, I didn't at the time have the, the zoning for that piece of property. I've since been able to give with the city, our, our planning and zoning didn't have that information, so it is, it is in city limits, it's a, it's own C two. They don't have, after speaking with them, they didn't have any, anything they knew he was going to do with it. When I spoke with Mr. Eisenberger, he didn't really have a, a for sure plan of what he wants to do with his property. He spoke of a bed and breakfast or some rental homes, so the property, it's in a floodplain, the, the approach itself isn't, but the property is, it's, to me, it's going to be pretty limited of what he can do with it. You know, in this day and age, they build stuff everywhere. I wish I had a better recommendation for you guys, I don't really have one because of the city limits dilemma. It, the, the approach itself, where he wants to put it is fine for site distance, it's fine for everything. And since I said that to you guys, I did anticipating if we're going to approve it, or how we're going to go forward, I did add a couple stipulations. One would be the approach, the approach will only be considered upon forfeiture, forfeiture, forfeiture of the permit approved December fourteenth. He's going to have to give up the one he's already got, they're, they're too close together. Uh, the other one would be, the, the approach will maintain a negative grade to the limits of the right of way, and this is something else I've added. I don't know what your thoughts on that are, but I would like to start on our roads that are paved roads, I'd like to see those approaches be paved. So I put that in as a stipulation that the approach will be paved to the, to the limits of the right. I thought of it on this one because it does go into this floodplain area, and I just don't want a bunch of blood being tracked out onto our road, cities or whoever's road it is. So if we go forward with it, those are the stipulations I would like to put in there, it will need a culvert. Site distance is fine, everything about it is fine for what he's wanting to do, I just don't know what he's wanting to do there in order to.
What's the difference on a commercial approach to a residential approach?
In ours, in the counties, it's the width.
Yeah.
The width is the main one, we have a maximum width of fifty feet, now the city only requires a forty-foot wide approach for commercial. But being that this is technically a county road, I, I guess it would fall under our jurisdiction of what we decide we should have for a width. We do allow a smaller approach, but that's the maximum. So really, the only difference between commercial and residential is the maximum width.
So if he goes in there and decides he can't do any commercial, puts a house on it, we're not, there's really no harm, it's just a wider approach.
That's correct. That's correct. Um, and like I say, it, the original, the original, when I found the original approach from twenty-one, you know, it was going to be for a residence. And he's already got, for this lot, he's got an approach permit, and there is a field approach further north. So there's going to be two approaches on this one piece of property, but they're, both approaches are separated by a creek or a drainage, so it's kind of a messed up little piece of property. You almost need two approaches to get on each side of the property, without building a bridge somewhere inside or a culvert or whatever. Again, like I said, I wish I had a better recommendation for you guys, I know this has always been a problem in the past. I, I do, I looked up and I found where the last approach that was permitted on there, it was under Lawrence County Resolution twenty nineteen dash fourteen, is what you guys approved it under. So.
Commissioner Sleep, what would be better if you, if there was more information, I'd wait a little bit to do it.
More information is always better, in my opinion, but I don't know if we're going to get any more information out of Mr. Eisenberger, I don't know that he really knows what he wants to do there. He's, you can see, he's not planning on doing any construction on it from May of, until May of twenty-five, is what he's showing to be built, so.
My guess, he's probably just setting it up so he can build it. Yeah, I'm, he, I'm seeing him in the development business before, he owns a lot of properties, and he's, he's a good businessman, but I, I would guess he's doing that with that Miller Ranch going next door and all that stuff, who knows? And I personally don't see the problem with having a better approach, so.
Siding, go ahead, go ahead. I just think that the siding and safety is what we have to be concerned about, not what, not what Jesus.
And it meets all of that. The only thing that I would say that, the use that could change is, you know, if all of a sudden we put a twenty-unit, you know, motel there, or, or apartment building, then you could see a use of our road change. That's the only thing, but the city has no idea what he's doing there in order to save, so.
And that's separate from the approach.
Well, if, if it created a situation where there may need a turning lane, something like that is all I'm, if, if the business that was put there that would be allowed under the, under the zoning, if it, if it created a hazard as far as traffic, I guess, that would be my concern. That's unknown.
That can be dealt with, the building permit.
It could be.
Yeah. But is it the county that would approve the building permit though, or is it the city?
Uh, city.
City would do the building permit there, yeah, but they'll be more stringent than we are. But are they going to be able to require changes in the road? With our agreement, I would guess so. Commissioner Flanagan, do you have any thoughts you want to share?
The last few times we've approved permits off that road, there was very specific wording on how we did it, and I would suggest that we follow that same wording. It has to, it has to do with whether or not we actually do control that road.
I have that. Okay, thank you.
And then I would probably condition it also on the fact that depending on what kind of development goes in there, there may or may not be a turning lane required on Christianson Drive.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, the wording that he's looking for is that. Incorporating reference Lawrence County Resolution twenty nineteen fourteen here, and, and further noting that the city of Spearfish has recently annexed additional land in the city, including the area adjacent to Christianson Drive, to be served to the point to the Otter Sea County Highway right of way. And is subject of this motion to the extent the county has any remaining authority, if any, to do so, then to authorize chairman to sign the commercial approach. That's what was out at the last night.
Sounds pretty good. Work for you?
I'm fine with it, like I say, that, like, Mr. Jennings pointed out, it, it meets all of our requirements, our site distance, and things like that, everything's good.
I, I don't, I missed it, but you brought it up earlier, does it specifically note that if this permit is approved, the one prior approved is revoked?
I've added that here to the latest one, that we would revoke the existing permit.
Same, right.
Okay. I'm moving along recommendations. And that's the list. And the wording as well. Okay, two seconds. All right, then I will have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, the approval motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
That's one question relating to that that didn't involve the motion, Mr. Chairman, if I may. On part of, we require a surety bond of five thousand dollars, is that still adequate, or do we need to update that part of the order? For approaches?
You know, I'm just wondering if that's a, I don't figure that's out of date. Approaches, for the most part, don't really affect our roads so much as the utility portion of it. Five thousand dollars doesn't do much repair work anymore. If, if they didn't put the right size culvert in, and we had to go in and remove the existing culvert or replace it, or even had a culvert that if they failed to do that, I guess, you know, five thousand dollars probably wouldn't cover that.
Okay. So. All right, so we look at, yeah, John, I'm going to ask you to sit tight for just a little bit, please, and we've got a scheduled pub, public hearing at eight twenty-five, which we are at. For Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, which is a resolution vacating a portion of section line. Will, are you going to present this course, and then allow it to be published, and to just publish it? So you may proceed.
I think it's, I mean, I think it only affects market geo rust, so if you look at the drawings that are attached, the section line goes through, I think, basically, I think it's two, two primary properties, and as I understand it, the rusts own both of those. So it would appear that, that there is other alternative access for any adjacent lot owners. So it would appear that that there is o- other alternative access for any adjacent lot owners. Uh so I'm looking at at the coronation. Track and then also Logan, I think the rest own both of those. And then you can see otherwise that there's access for Gold Mountain off of off of the existing road.
Didn't we approve a lot line change?
Yes, I believe that that is, this is, that is this vacation and then this would be that. This vacation would be documented on that plat to be filed, yes.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the body of the audience that would like to speak for or against this. We would ask at this time that you please stand up, state your name and your address for the record. Is there anyone online or in the body of the audience that would like to speak for this? One more time, anyone that would like to speak for or against? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and offer to the board. I don't have a problem. I would move to approve the vacation of the. I would second that. Motion in a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. All right. This one doesn't.
Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash ten, I agree, which is also for vacations.
Uh do you wanna present that, please?
Okay, so this um vacation is in relation to a couple of meetings ago, you had that um variance. That came through the utility.
For the building?
For the building. Yes, and for the sacred. So this is um vacating a section of that road. And then um it's my understanding that a plat will be coming through with a new um. Additional road to the other side. So this is to eliminate them having to have that variance on on that um. Utility easement.
Do this, we don't wanna vacant before they change it over.
They have to vacate the section and then they'll replat it to 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 add the new section of the road.
I think it's gonna happen.
But I was a little confused on that one. Are we vacating the road right away or a section?
The road.
The road, because it's listed as section one and they.
Same statute.
Then I'm just moving the road right away over so they don't need.
That's right, yes.
This is a separate public hearing, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we do the public hearing part and discuss?
I was just getting ready to do that. This is a public hearing. As stated before, if there's anyone in the body of the audience or online. That would like to speak for or against this, we would ask that you please stand, state your names. And your address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this in the body of the audience or online? Keep seeing none, we will close the public hearing and offer to the board. Commissioner Flanagan.
Um I don't know how we can vacate part of a street. That that will no longer meet um, it'll no longer meet county ordinance. So it appears to me what they should do is plat the road first, then we can vacate that portion that isn't involved anymore. They can go through the other vacation process to do that. But to vacate a portion of an existing public right of way. That then makes it non-conforming doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay, we have a motion before we move to the next one. Second for further discussion. I'm Mr. Jennings, further confused on what's making to.
So right here is so that this is the lot where that structure that utility. And so they're basically going to vacate this part of that road and then they'll they'll move it over um to one of the. So that this here where they're putting that utility shut.
Yeah, structure, structure.
Your motion in my second was to continue it until the next meeting is what I. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, let's do a roll call. Of all of those in favor will say aye. Friend, please.
Flanagan.
Aye.
Tisdale. Sleep.
Sorry, guys. I thought we would have seen this. All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
I think we can uh continue with uh our last bridge sideways to bring it in this time.
Back to you, John. Okay, um I have the state required resolution for the urgent inspection program where. That's two again, I I have recommended that we stick with roles that are currently working on four of our structures pending. I do have a list of other, they did finally send me the list of other engineers there or. On the, in the state system, I should say. They're not all in our area. But I do need a, the chairman's signature on that, and I I'm recommending them stick with roles.
Well, they they certainly know our system and our bridges and. I move to authorize the chair to sign this agreement with all the engineering for continued inspections. I was second there. Okay, now a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
And then the last thing I have right now is the uh agreement with the South, South Dakota Division Parks. Agreement for them to pay us to grade and and uh. Treat the rock block falls with magnesium chloride not to exceed eight thousand dollars. Does that usually cover it, John?
I think it's been in that sixty some hundred, sixty four hundred dollars what it cost us last year. It needs to, it's the eight thousand is enough to cover it, okay?
Is that your recommendation?
Yes, that, yep, yep. I think we should even stake their money.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Um we got the work order from Bros on that Christianson Drive, the bypass. Their uh. Their proposal was not to exceed seventy one thousand seven hundred dollars. And then also there would be a another not to exceed eleven thousand five hundred. And that would be from the state DOT geotechnical survey. I just wanted to kind of update you guys on that, that they they will be getting started on that here as soon as weather allows.
On the actual, like that?
Well, the design of it, okay. I'm proposing that we build it ourselves. It can be the most economical way. We already have, I believe, I'm hoping that the pipes they recommend we have in stock. So I think we can do it for a lot less than a contract.
Yeah, well, it sounds good that we can get those folks taken care of up there.
There'd be the hydraulic analysis too, right?
That's correct.
Anything else or second?
We have the second reading of our utility ordinance that Bruce and Commissioner Jennings have been working on.
Yeah, first hearing was at your last meeting. There there are no change, substantive changes to the ordinance itself. We did hear any concerns. One thing we did do, and the ordinance does suggest that the highway superintendent has has authority or discretion to modify. Promulgate the appropriate form. So originally, we had a draft form, permit form. And if you look at your packets, we updated that. We added some additional language. I lost it here. Uh we added some additional language uh regarding that there again. Here it is, stand by, please. That uh we think was important, that says that failure to accomplish the occupancy in accordance with the provisions of this permit. Will automatically render the permit null and void and will applicable constitute grounds for its removal and or full restoration of occupancy site at the. At this expense. So we would um add that into the form as well. Make sense?
Yes.
So I'd be looking for a motion to authorize the chairman's.
Right now, you have a motion in a second to authorize the chairman. Sign the document. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. I see we've also got a update on the courthouse boiler. Kim, are you gonna handle that one?
I can get started maybe?
Yeah, go ahead.
So about, was it eight years ago, I think, you purchased three thermal solutions boilers in the courthouse? And one of those recently, Tim, you know, it's leaking and it's such that, as I understand it, it really can't be repaired. It's essentially, it's disposable, isn't it? Um and and so we had an idea that it may be covered under your insurance through your boiler coverage and so we submitted it. Although it wasn't covered under your primary coverage, it was covered under reinsurance. And and so we've been notified that it it does qualify um as an expense. And so um we expect that we will be getting, I think, minus deductible, about forty three thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars payable in two parts. Uh that they should try to send the first check for twenty one thousand and change what they had since their uh address to the insurance company. Uh payable to them instead of us. And they're gonna re- reissue a check. So we should shortly be receiving a check for twenty one thousand dollars. And then when the repair is effective, we should get the second half. And so I think Tim will discuss that's what you is sought out from Erasmus and. The uh quote, a not to exceed price for a re- replacement boiler. You should have that in your packets as well. And the not to exceed price would be forty nine thousand fifteen dollars. So that's what that cost of a new boiler would be compared to what we just talked about, about forty three thousand dollars that you're gonna ultimately get roughly. For it, for the boiler coverage. So for about five thousand dollars, I think it's fair to say you can get a new boiler. And so I think Tim is looking for assurance that he can go ahead and and get that boiler ordered, which is like two, two or three weeks out, right? And get that put in place.
Pretty much sums it up. I mean, we can get a new heat exchanger for the one that's leaking, but just the heat exchanger is forty six thousand dollars. You get a whole new boiler for forty nine thousand. That's very well, so. We're looking at that. And thanks to Bruce for having the idea to call the insurance company because we didn't think they could cover it. But whoa and behold, we got a clause in there that covers us boilers and something else, so. The fact that we have three of these boilers, will our insurance cover the other two if, if and when they fail?
We don't know. We were, you know, we're, we've talking about that, you know, it's too bad they didn't all fail at once, right? Hasn't been the case, so I don't know that we're gonna have, you know, a sort of warranty forever on these things. Um but um, you know, we're not optimistic that very shortly that we're not gonna have a problem, right?
Well, Tim and I went and looked at them yesterday, and you know, they're all, they all are within the s- same hours, you know, they're very similar.
They cycle them, right?
Yeah, it's, we can run the building on two, but uh you know, we have the third one to, you know, they they take turns and. It's, I just wonder if, you know, if one fail, you know, the other two are probably not too far behind. I don't know. Sounds like these are not very reliable boiler boilers to begin with, is what I'm gathering. My question being if they're gonna be covered as well, but I guess we'll see.
It's amazing. If you went and looked at one of these big thermal solutions boilers and then looked at the little lock and bar, of course, the lock and bar doesn't have the capacity. But the lock and bars, this is probably the size, it's smaller than a washing machine you have at home, right? And and compared to one of these other boilers, which would be, you could probably put a couple in this room, the size difference. But just the efficiency that they have in some of these smaller units is amazing, and I think that's what you're looking at, the smaller, more efficient. So Tim will go ahead and do that.
I have nothing else, if you guys don't have anything for me.
Attack that guy about grading.
Well, they kind of did it on the whole.
Yep, no, I'll, I'll, I'll get ahold of the people that need to know and figure something out.
They'll probably keep me. You have to do a lot of mulling, right? We'll take a five minute break.
Thank you, guys.
Break now, folks.
See you, guys.
So.
Under my.
Okay, it is nine a.m. This is the point in time for a board discussion action, starting out with a public hearing and first reading. Changes only three sixty-four. Amber, would you lead us in this, and then we'll wind up the public hearing?
Um, you guys received the packet from Deer Mountain Village. There was a narrative in there as well, sorry, as well as some kind of overall drawings of it. So the narrative, basically what they're trying to do is they purchased the adjacent property, trying to do changes only so it matches the rest of it. Most of it's been, you know, a combination of park forest, you know, survey type layouts, and they're trying to go into the planned unit development, so it's all surrounding. It is a part of the original master plan that was, you guys had approved that quite a while ago now, it's been a couple of years, I think, but, um, basically, it's just block C, so it's the adjacent block. There is a map in here. This is that overall, so you can kind of see the overall layout. This is Terry Peak Summit Road, you know, kind of goes right down here. So the gray area over here and all of this, the purple area was already inclusive, so this part right up here, this block C, is what we're looking at now. Cleans up a lot of stuff. We've been dealing with replats and things, moving things around to clean up a lot of those old deer, uh, Mystic Meyer lots.
Before I open the public hearing, Mr. Keating, did you want to add anything, or your, your team members want to add anything?
Uh, hi, I'm Gerard Keating. Am I supposed to tell my address?
Please.
Great. It's one one two five Skyland Road in Lee. Amber hit her right, we're just trying to clean up historical issues to bring it all together in one P U D, so that all of the lot owners are working under the same guidelines through the county. We're not increasing density, just cleaning it up, making it more efficient, and spreading the whole sites around in a more productive way. Our goal is to preserve the historic ski trails on the south end of the property, because we've learned that's very special and, and so we're trying to preserve that, by redesigning our lot layout, and this is part of that.
All right, thank you. All right, this is the time and place for a public hearing. If you would like to speak for or against this, this is just the first reading, mind you, that we know actually take of the day, but this is the opportunity for you to come forward if you're for or against this. And I would ask that you would please stand and state your name and your address to the record. Is there anyone in the body of the audience or online that would like to speak? Okay, one more time, anyone from the audience or online? Saying that, we'll close the public hearing and offer to the board for further discussion. And as I stated, this is just the first reading. Any questions or discussions, Ellen?
I'm good.
All right. Until next meeting. Thank you.
We should, yes, I want that stuff, and we should not need to submit anything, because everything cares.
Amber, it's your next. Okay. All right. Amber?
All right, so this next one is Cole cabins, and Cole cabins has been in existence since two thousand five, and it is at the base of three eighty-five, right across from, uh, yeah, um, oh geez. I did. Why can't I think of the name of the campground?
Oh, is it Wild Bill?
Yes, Wild Bill Campground, just off the top. So Wild Bill, it's right on the corner, there's those like four, four, six cabins, I think, in there.
It's your family, just over there?
No, okay, no, it's around the corner. Um, so the six cabins that were in there, Dave Cole had started with one, um, and, well, started with three of them, and the original conditional use permit was lots thirteen or fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. And then he ended up purchasing lots twelve and thirteen, and brought those in to that original C U P. And then, um, he's been operating them that way. And then on lot seventeen, he also has that one included in the C U P, but as part of the sale of this, he would like to keep seventeen for himself. So it's kind of a request of one to transfer the existing conditional use permit, keeping it operating, just like they have, there's warrant holes on each one, and he would like to transfer that to Dream Ventures Capital LLC, which is here now, but he would like to specifically not include lots seventeen, because he's keeping that habit for his own, just for him to keep. Um, so it would be transferring C U P three oh three, inclusive of lots fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, well, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, to be transferred to Dream Ventures. Um, I've been in contact with them, so there was a letter from Dave Cole, there's also a letter in here, um, from Andrew, who's here in the room, accepting them, they understand kind of the conditions, went through everything, continue, they'll continue operating, and just like it has since two thousand five, with no change.
Action. Starting out with a public hearing and first reading. Changes on three, six, eight, four. Amber, would you lead us in this and then we'll go into the public hearing?
You guys received the packet from Deer Mountain Village. There was a narrative in there as well. Sorry, as well as some kind of overall drawings of it. So the narrative, basically what they're trying to do is they purchased the adjacent property, trying to do changes only so it matches the rest of it. Most of it's been, you know, a combination of park forest, you know, survey type layouts, and they're trying to go into the planned unit development. So it's all surrounding. It is a part of the original master plan that was, you guys had approved that quite a while ago now. It's been a couple of years, I think. Basically, it's just block C, so it's the adjacent block. There is a map in here. This is that overall, so you can kind of see the overall layout. This is Terry Peak Summit Road, you know, kind of goes right down here. So the gray area over here and all of this, the purple area was already inclusive. So this part right up here, this block C, is what we're looking at now. Cleans up a lot of stuff. We've been dealing with replats and things, moving things around to clean up a lot of those old deer or Mystic Meyer spots.
Before I open the public hearing, Mr. Keating, did you want to add anything or your team members want to add anything?
Hi, I'm Gerard Keating. Am I supposed to tell my address?
Please.
Great. It's one, one, two, five Skyland Road in Lee. Amber hit her right. We're just trying to clean up historical issues to bring it all together in one PUD so that all of the lot owners are working under the same guidelines through the county. We're not increasing density, just cleaning it up, making it more efficient and spreading the whole sides around in a more productive way. Our goal is to preserve the historic ski trails on the south end of the property because we've learned that's very special and so we're trying to preserve that by redesigning our lot layout. And this is part of that.
All right. Thank you. All right. This is the time and place for a public hearing. If you would like to speak for or against this, this is just the first reading, might be that we don't actually take it today, but this is the opportunity for you to come forward if you're for or against this. And I would ask that you would please stand and state your name and your address to the record. Is there anyone in the body of the audience or online that would like to speak? Okay, one more time. Anyone from the audience or online? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and offer to the board for further discussion. And as I stated, this is just the first reading. Any questions or discussions on?
I'm good. I'm all right. Pretty successful.
All right. Until next meeting. Thank you.
We should, yes, I want that stuff. And we should not need to submit anything. Everything here is fine.
Amber, it's your next.
Okay. Well, that's my question.
No.
So these aren't pretty lots. I don't want to argue.
Sir, I use here for condition useful permit three oh three. I answer. Okay.
All right, Amber.
All right. So this next one is Cole cabins. And Cole cabins has been in existence since 2005, and it is at the base of three eighty-five right across from, no, oh geez.
I just blew it.
I did. Why can't I think of the name of the campground?
Oh, is it Wildground?
Yes, Wild Bill Campground. Just off the top. So Wild Bill, it's right on the corner. There's those like four, six cabins, I think, in there.
It's your family, just over there?
No, I think it's around the corner. So the six cabins that were in there, Dave Cole had started with one and, well, started with three of them. And the original conditional use permit was lots thirteen or fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. And then he ended up purchasing lots twelve and thirteen and brought those in to that original CUP. And then he's been operating them that way. And then on lot seventeen, he also has that one included in the CUP, but as part of the sale of this, he would like to keep seventeen for himself. So it's kind of a request of one to transfer the existing conditional use permit, keeping it operating just like they have. There's warrant holes on each one, and he would like to transfer that to Dream Ventures Capital LLC, which is here now. But he would like to specifically not include lots seventeen because he's keeping that habit for his own, just for him to keep. So it would be transferring CUP three oh three, inclusive of lots fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, well, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen to be transferred to Dream Ventures. I've been in contact with them. So there was a letter from Dave Cole. There's also a letter in here from Andrew, who's here in the room, accepting them. They understand kind of the conditions, went through everything, continue, they'll continue operating and just like it has since 2005 with no changes. We've never had a complaint in all this time. Dave ran a pretty tight business and he made sure that all the, all of the net revenue issues too. So it's just, Dave's just retiring, deciding that he wants something else. Or just retiring, I'm not sure. He does a lot, so I'm not sure what he'll end up doing. So that's kind of what it is. And then Andrew just wanted to make sure he was here, you know, new business venture and just wanted to make sure you guys all were able to meet him, if there's any questions or concerns or anything for him.
Bob, no issue.
Yeah, you would need a motion to transfer from Dave Cole to Dream Ventures Capital LLC. And we want to probably specify in the minutes that does not include lots seventeen, just because it was in the original CUP, so it would be changing the legal description.
We can't do anything on that next time.
No, this is, you can do it today. Yep.
Okay.
There's no public hearing.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, we have a motion in a second for approval. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So you're good to go. After the minutes are done, y'all, if there's anything you want to add, but after the minutes are done, we'll provide a copy to you that shows everything being transferred.
Okay. I appreciate everybody's time. Thanks, Amber, for all the information. I really appreciate it.
No problem.
Looking forward to the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else you need from me to say or are you good?
Nope, you're good to go.
Thank you.
All right, Amber, off to spring.
Yep. Um, I don't see, I don't see nothing. Hey, Milan, I guess it's up to you guys. I know Mike was not able to be online. He had texted me this morning, but Anthony from K L J was going to. But it's really, I mean, we don't really need any information from him. I had everything. So basically what this one was, you remember in 2022, the original letter of credit actually expired. It was for five hundred and eighty-three thousand fifty-one dollars, and it expired. But in that meantime, the bank had gotten a hold of me. They knew it had expired. It wasn't overlooked on their part. And so they extended it, which is why we have this letter dated September twenty-first, twenty-three, Zap saying Milan money. It's because they extended it. Basically, what had happened is it was pretty much done, but they had, they were waiting on the work from K L J to do the final asphalt, and that's the part that was kind of in the book. So they were finally able to get all that done. K L J inspected it, did everything, provided this asphalt here, which is what we require for the bond, be released as stamp saying everything's done. So we were able to do that. And then on Thursday, I think it was Thursday of last week, John Bay had gone out and did his little report, and I emailed that to everybody. I think it was Thursday afternoon, so it was after the season, so everything else. And that report, basically, he just put it together, looks like this one. He went through, went out there, looked at the asphalt and then actually wrote it. Luckily, there's not a lot of snow on the ground, so he was able to get in there. He said in general, the company of work appears to meet compliance with the asphalt plans. The roadwoods, graves, and drainage all meet the current laws, county standards. Payment curve in gutter is in place. The coal sack at the west end of Double Oak is still a gravel surface, which is fine. We allow rattle, so it was okay. Curtain better in place, and they are accommodating when they, they can pave it and match up. There was some lack of vegetation created, some erosion, but there was no damage to the roads. Looks like drainage structures are in place and of adequate size and flare to end sections. The riprap had not been placed at the points indicated in the asphalt plans, but the stockpiles of the riprap were all there. So I mean, that's, he did a really nice report. It was nice to get this from him, so he put that together. And then I did share this with, with both K L J and with Mike Short, and they responded with, they were aware that the riprap wasn't in yet. It was more mainly just they didn't want damage to somebody right now. They didn't want to go down, you know, damage what was there. So that will get placed as soon as it's nice enough out. They've got the riprap there, they just got to push it down and put it in. And then they're spraying for the erosion and they'll have the grass stuff on there. We usually don't hold up stuff for that stuff because they just, they can't usually do it until it's spring. But everything looks good. So that's kind of where it's at. But they did just want to let everybody know that they were aware of those couple of things, and they'll go in as soon as they can and finish it up.
George Plager.
It's not accounting right away, so, you know, it's their own private stuff.
What are issues for the release of the letter?
Yeah, they're asking for the release of the five eighty-three zero five one. And if we do that, we have a process that we have to follow that by the bank with different minutes in the letter stating as such of when we released it.
So until spring, everything's done.
We don't normally. I guess we've allowed people, when it's just down to those couple of things, we've allowed people, because it's a lot of money that they're paying interest on.
And they're going to want it in anyway. What slaps?
I'm authorized to release the letter, Fred.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for the release of a letter of credit. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Your call, please.
Plan again?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleepy?
Oh.
Jenny?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Motion passes.
Anthony, I see you just got on. We actually were running ahead, so we just got done with it. It did get released. So we're, it did get released, just with the notation, and I know you had seen the response from Mike Short, I believe, that said that, you know, a couple of things that overlapped, like putting the riprap in and spraying for erosion would get done.
Yeah. Yeah, I did see that.
Yeah. So other than that, you're good to go. It got released, so we will go ahead and submit the letter to the bank, and you guys will get a copy of it.
Okay, perfect. Well, that was easy. Thanks. Thanks, Amber.
All right.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Okay. Now, item on our agenda is items from the public. We'll allow anyone from the public to address the board. They have three minutes each. And if you want to address the board, please state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone at this time from the public that would like to address the board? There are only, oh, Erica.
That's true.
All right. I don't see anyone online. So we'll close that portion, and we'll go, is there any items from the commissioners? Tell me.
See you, Erica.
Tell me the process here. I was going to discuss that with you in executive session. Okay. Very good, please. I'll start out the items from commissioners. I guess we, we're seeing a little bit of, I think it's just one individual in our community that's upset with our public safety building. I just, I just would like to commend our sheriff and the team for the progress that this has made and the vast majority of the community standing behind this board and the decisions that were made. From what I can tell, the building is probably sixty-five percent complete and up, going along very well. I think it's going to be a huge asset to this community. And I'd just like to thank Sheriff and those that have been involved for all of the hard work and keeping things on track. I'm, I'm looking forward to it being completed. I just, I just wanted to make that known. The utmost confidence in all the decisions that are being made. Yep. So this, this hasn't, this wasn't something that just happened overnight. It's been in the works for many years. When I was on the board for my first twelve-year stint, we talked about that something was going to have to be done with our public safety building right next to us here, and it's come a long ways. A lot of people put a lot of time in. Just want to make sure those that deserve the credit know that. Gentlemen, anybody else have anything to comment? Mr. Flanagan, you've got anything?
I do not.
You have an executive session. I might have to mute the computer and then get Brandon on my phone to talk about that.
All right. Well, if no one has anything else to add, we will go into the next item, which is executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask for an executive session pursuant to act now one twenty-five dash two, which is consulting with legal counsel or view communications with legal counsel about proposed any litigation or transaction matters.
I'll move away out of the executive session. Away. Wait a second.
Yes. Yes.